To tonight's budget finance committee. We're here tonight to discuss the preliminary budget for the 2013-2014 school year. We recently have received data from OPI giving us budget numbers to work with for the next school year. You will see on a sheet right here, this is the budget data sheet from a guy that Mr. Morgan has worked with to get some of the information that we will need for the next school year. Bottom line, so that you're aware, we are sitting in page two, you will go down on page two, and it says fiscal year 2014 budget limits, and it says highest budget without a vote, $5,298,938, that is the amount of money that we have for the next school year. So I just want you to know that that is the budget number that OPI came up with for us, the number which we have to work with. With that, we've been working on taking a look at some of our actuals. Looking by this point to have our Black Mountain software situated where we could actually print off some actual numbers for tonight's meeting, but there are some problems that I've seen in it that we have to look at some of the general voucher coatings from last year to make sure that they're in the correct spots because it doesn't give you real actuals of last year, and so they'd be numbers that would just be sitting out there and giving us a false impression as to how each line item balanced out last year versus where we're at this year. I will say this, as you're aware, the function codes for each part of the budget, the important part, the rest of the line items within the function code are primarily our best estimations. For example, when we talk about snowplowing, we estimate what our expenses are going to be for snowplowing. Some years, we're going to spend more than what we actually have budgeted for because we may have a severe snow year. In other years, we may not spend the amount that we had budgeted for. And so the entire function in that part of your budget covers the expenses of when a line item budget goes over or when a line item is sold. So I just want that to be noted. As you go through and take a look at the Excel spreadsheet numbers, you're going to notice on the far right-hand side, differences. These differences will tell you whether the line item has increased or decreased over previous year. And so you're basically taking line A minus three to get that number. And you'll see that there are some, you know, significant changes on this front page, but I'll plan to address that so that we understand how this instructional block of the function of the budget, you know, is having some decreases to it and why those decreases exist and will be part of our discussion here as we move forward to make a recommendation to the board. As you want to dig through and find detail as to how each of these lines are constructed, you will see, for example, under education line item 112, professional educational, you see $2,000,000, at least a $2,600,000 budget. If you go into your detailed budget, you will see the salaries and all the employees that make up the salaries that build into that number. And so the detailed budget gives you all the employees that we plug in, where they are currently sitting on the salary scale, and, you know, some things. One of the liabilities that exists right now, which we're still trying to track down, is movement on salary scale. There are some teachers that have placed in letters that they will be moving on scale for their contract, and so that is one thing we do not have budgeted yet, and we're going to still need to work on staff member, and that line item could change. So we're currently waiting to see all the letters received by the end of the school year as to who is expected to move due to educational attainment, whether they go from a BA, 15 to a master's, whatever it is that they're asking to move on scale. Any questions?
Yes.
The audience does not participate.
We're not. This is an open meeting.
No, it's a committee meeting. We do not take public comment during committee meetings.
It was put online.
You're available to participate by observing our committee meetings.
Montana Annotated Loans say that I can speak.
Actually, we're not going to take public comment, and we're not going to take questions from the audience during committee meetings.
The committee needs to function and do its work, and so we're going to do our work.
You guys are unbelievable.
Since you're the new guy, I just want to make sure that, so as a board, committee meetings are closed to public comment.
Yeah, typically how it works is that the committee meetings, we come in and we do our work, and we allow the public to come in and observe the work of our committee. They're more than welcome to come in and observe how the committee is functioning.
That's all committee meetings?
Yes.
And we're...
So like when we have negotiations?
That's according to code and paid and all that. It's all uncovered under that code?
So like under negotiation when we have negotiations?
Well, I mean, it's not being the advocate. That's my question, but first one, is that, I'm just, so our new guys want to make sure that, you know, I'm here to represent the public and everything, too, and not, just want to know why we're making decisions, you know, because actually...
It is my understanding from UT SBA that we can do our committee work without interruption by the public so that we can conduct our business.
It's not interruptions. You're saying that they cannot participate in a public meeting, is what we're saying?
No.
You're just saying they can't comment?
They can participate by observing. They're available to come in and watch the proceedings.
But they cannot comment?
Or not have comment. So that we can conduct our business.
And that's under public meeting laws, and we're, us as a board, we're covered under all those laws. That's what you're telling me, right?
Okay.
Which floor is that, by the way?
So moving on, as we are doing our work here, just so that you have, if there are any questions at this point.
Real quick on all the previous years, these are actual historical, are these actual accurate numbers on the previous years, B, C, and D, or they, are those, you're saying they're historical?
Those were the projected historical numbers.
Projected, historical, so they're not actual, how those years?
Those were the numbers we used for those years.
But they're not the ones we ended with?
No, they're not the actials in terms of how they're memorized.
Do I have access, do I have those? Can I get those?
Like I stated earlier, we are working to get those.
And that's because of Black Mountain doesn't, our Black Mountain software doesn't have them?
Well, they do have them, but as I reviewed one of the actials, the reports that we had, there were some general voucher entries that were in an area that I didn't believe they belonged in, so we're trying to correct that to make sure that the numbers that you receive are reflective of action, the actials of how the budget operated.
All the way back for the previous three, all the way back to 2010? Right, the three, I'm seeing two twelve, thirteen, eleven. Okay, so you're working on those, and we'll have those when?
I'm hopeful in the next week or two.
By the next meeting or whatever?
By the next committee meeting that we have.
Okay, thank you.
So this historical is the budget number that we will work with? That's...
Okay, so just so you can understand how these numbers come to life on the Excel spreadsheet, you can go into the detailed budget and start working through it. Now, I don't know how the individuals on this committee want to work through this, if you feel comfortable taking this information and producing it yourself, or whether you'd like to go through it in detail tonight. We can dig through different parts of it to see exactly what's happening. But I will say this, in this budget, we currently have placed money aside for negotiations with classified contracts. So we have negotiations coming up where there's money built into this budget to negotiate with the classified unit. Also, what you will find is that we have also built into this budget and funded for another librarian position. Because by state accreditation standards, we are required to have an operating on property. So we've agreed to go ahead and hire a librarian for next year, so we're in the process of collecting applications for that. We are also in the process of collecting applications for a fifth grade teacher who is retired, that is built into this budget, and we also are looking at an additional teacher at the fourth grade level, where, you know, we have a request by parents and teachers to address a concern for the number of students in an area and adding additional resources to that grade level. We've also, I've been asked by the chairman of the board to look at the SRO program, so we also have the SRO built in with this budget. So those are things that we have built into this budget, and we can talk about where those are at. Now, I will say, some of the supply line items that we talk about, take a look at some of these supply dollars off to the side. We have scaled those back to 2011, 2012 numbers. They don't have to stay there. If we decide to not do an SRO, money can be shifted out of the SRO, meaning to bring it back into supply dollars. If we decide not to do an extra teacher at the fifth grade level this next year, you can scale that money back, meaning it's supply dollars that we're talking about. So these are things that we have looked at and things we are discussing. From that, we can go down through here and we can talk about some of the things that, why there are significant changes.
Sorry, can I have one back before you pass that subject? You say you placed money aside for the classified, where's that, under our budget? What category you got that on your paper?
So for example, if you go to line item 201, 160, 1,000, 117, you go out the third line item down, teacher aides, there, if you look in the detailed budget that you're given, you will see there are salaries. Those salaries are built off of a rate increase, percentage increase, they're not built off of the actual leadership rating right now. So as we go through all classified employees who end up in here who are part of the classified agreement, they already have their numbers built in. So that's how that...
Under teachers aides, 117?
That's a classified employee there, or if you get under custodians, which is under operation maintenance part of the budget.
The classified people are all over the budget, basically. There's not one line item for them like there is for teachers. They're under their own little departments.
So some are playground aides, some are special education aides, some are custodians. So moving along, as we go down, you'll see that on 1,000, 170 vacation leave, we have historically budgeted about $20,000 in that area. What we look at there is it's a funded liability. We have a liability that exists that we have people who move and we have pay out of their vacation leave. We have not had for the past several years anybody cashing out in that, so we felt like we could scale that back by about 50%, and that's what we did in this budget. As we go down through and you get to health insurance, you'll see that there's a significant savings there. We have realized that there's about eight employees historically who have not been taking health insurance, so we're not funding that liability there. So that shows up as a savings within the budget. Now, you may ask, why would we do this? Well, you might see that when we fund those liabilities 100%, we end up with a lot of end-of-the-year monies. And so we've ended up with very strong end-of-the-year monies for past few years because we don't have the liability of those individuals retiring or asking for the cash out of their vacation leave, or those individuals asking to take this after the school's plan, that's the most of that. So those are things where you just feel like we can scale back in those areas and still be very healthy and strong as a school budget. As we get down into supply budgets, you will see that there are cuts in district-wide elementary, junior high, high school, textbooks, minor new equipment, stay the same, computer software, computer hardware, all of those areas. That takes us down to educational media services. Educational media services is basically the library. We've made some cuts in that area, and that has to deal with the expenditures of what they've been spending for the last few years, and seeing exactly what we can live with or live without. And so you'll see that there have been cutbacks in some of the supply areas. You will see under professional educational salary, there's a significant increase that has to deal with the addition of one full-time librarian salary added to the school. So you will see that the overall budget from last year for library media has increased by about $41,000.
Health insurance went up in there?
Well, it went up in there because when you add that third person, they have health insurance. That's part of their contract. When we go down to board services, trustee services, as you work down through there, you will see advertising, we increased the budget by 1,000, dues and fees we increased by 2,000. We noticed in the actials as we were looking down through there that we've been spending more money to advertise jobs and whatnot, so that's an area of the budget that we felt like has been overspent the last couple of years, and we need to put more money into to balance that. We also felt like on the dues and fees, we have been out of balance in that, and there's increases there to cover the dues and fees cost, and that's dues and fees like belonging to Montana School Boards Association or the National School Boards Associations.
Is this where all our legal services go into that category, 253?
Yes, we budget 6,000 for legal services.
That includes every, all attorneys like our telegraph and all that, that's budgeted in that category?
Yeah, that's where we, when we get billed by her, that is where we pull the money out of.
She's working directly for us on the board. She may be sometime be working for the insurance company.
Yeah, she represents us, and for example, like with Title IX, the insurance company that falls under our insurance, and so she represents the school district and is paid by the insurance carrier in that instance.
Under Title IX, any Title IX case she's paid for under our insurance program?
If the insurance carrier deemed it a risk to the school district, that it needs Then we go down into superintendent's office, and you'll see there were, there's really very little change to that area. We get down to the office principal services, and you'll see that there is a cut in administrative. The previous year, we left Mrs. Hall's full salary in that, ensured we segregated it out, we made sure that half of her salary came out of construction, so we placed it up in, half of her salary up into 1,000, 112, there's the teachers, and then about half of her salary is being administered like it is defined in her contract.
Who's that for? I'm sorry, Mrs. Hall? Oh, okay, so, never met.
And it's a result of our decreasing from three principals to two and a half.
Right. Question, as far as salaries go, how do we, these are base salaries, how do you project their, like additional, for example, say, if you're all our base hours in here, what about their extracurricular activities that they, like for instance, like AD or anything bad, where's that?
There's a whole column, there's whole categories for that as we go.
Yeah, as we go down, we'll get to those areas. I'll make sure to point out how some of that works, okay? And then the detailed budget, you will see it's defined within the detailed budget for you. So then we go support services business, you know, it's relatively unchanged. When you get down to printing service, pretty much the same thing. Now, we did take the $500 supplies there, but we haven't used that supply money in a couple of years, actually in quite a few years, so we feel like, you know, when it comes to printing services, we don't feel like there's a lot of supplies that we need to use there. I think that what's happening is the, I think new supplies are pulling it out of district-wide instead of that area, and that's fine. It just demonstrates that we don't put money into that spot in our budget. Plant operation and maintenance budget, you will see that we have administrative, Dennis Burns, custodial maintenance, custodian contracts, you know, as it all works now, as we move down through this, you'll see changes in monies to the gas, well, contracted services, and then gas and electric, and that might be one that you might want to pull into your detailed budget and take a look at, because it'll kind of show you a little bit of how we try to deal with these issues. So that's 21, 160, 2,600. Is that what you had a question?
I was going to say, and some of that's a result of the improved equipment that we've been putting in for several years now, right?
Like what, for instance, what do you mean?
Controls on boiler system and stuff. We've made some upgrades on our control system in the boiler for cost savings. You know, we're able to operate in location heat.
Anything else?
Well, we changed out the lighting, we put in, you know, that high efficiency lighting in like the, in the new gym, that was another thing we upgraded.
So like when you get to operation maintenance, you get to contracted services, you'll see that you got event cleanup, refinish of green floors, boiler controls, and then we have some miscellaneous and some new carpeting, and you will see as that breaks out, there was a decrease in those contracted services from the previous year, and some of that comes in reduced. I know for previous year, we had 10,000 budgeted for new carpeting, this year, for this next year, we have budgeted 7,200, so there was some pullback in those areas. As you look at gas, you realize that we consistently operated in high boilies, well, 50s for the last few years on our gas, so we felt like we could very easily save about $10,000 and pull down to about $56,000 and still have a comfortable cushion, which is believe that that $10,000 was going into the year monies. In electricity, we pulled it back by about $5,000. And electricity is the other one. It's one that we've got to keep a close eye on. I think that we'll probably in short order, within the next couple of years, add that money back into it, but I believe we still have a good cushion for any utility increases that we may see this next year or increase in usage. And remember, for example, one of our increased usages this past year was when the boiler system went down in the lower elementary, one of the things that we had to do was we had to leave all the lights on in the building 24/7 to produce some type of radiant heat to keep the building at a livable temperature for the kids. It wasn't ideal, but it was something that we did, and we also brought in a lot of space heaters, which were heavy draw on electricity also. So, you know, you do need a little cushion in those items in those types of cases or events could occur. And then taking a look down at minor new equipment, that was where another big hit to the budget, third, well, backup telephone, we increased telephone by 12,000 because we noticed that we were severely under budget in that area, and we need to increase the budget to address those issues that we saw with our bill, and that has to deal with our fiber lines and everything that come into the school for our community and some of the contracts we have on that. So we now feel like we're in balance on the phone, and that's why we increased it. In terms of supplies, we've left supplies alone, you know, it keeps the custodians with the cleaners they need to clean the building, but under minor equipment new, under line item 660, we did away with some fencing and millions for the parking lot, those are things that we had budgeted in that we did away with so that we're down to the $50,000, and that took us back to where it was not too long ago, there's just $56,000.
Is that the, is that the thing you have in mind for that or not?
For that $50,000? Well, one of the things we're looking at for that $50,000 is match to a grant. We have the Safe Routes to School grant that we're doing for Long Avenue, and one of the things that we, the board approved was a match to that grant, and I believe it was like 47,000. So we ended up getting the grant, the county kicks in CTEP dollars, we kick in some money for that, so that's where that money will come from in the future.
The other projects that we wanted to do, which was the fence and the parking lot buildings, we don't have to budget for where we got that.
For the most part.
Yeah.
We do, for this year, we're still, under our actials this year, we still have money for fencing and stuff, which we will use for some improvements around the school. And then we will probably want to talk about some other improvements that we're going to need in for safety around the school, and other things we'll have to have a discussion And then moving down, the next big line is special education instruction. And then moving down, the next big line is special education instruction. You will see that under vacation leave, once again, we have not had the need to pay that out, so we cut back on that. We'll also see that under workman's comp, we have had big savings there. The comp rate was miscoded, so we straightened that out. And then you can see with regard to supplies and travel, we've cut back to where we feel the actuals actually match up with the expenditures and of what we've had in the past with where we're at today. As we get down into the, to these bottom areas of extracurriculars, we start getting to band fire and all the coaching. This is an area of the budget that you're gonna probably see some numbers change because I talked to Mrs. Morgan about this. We need to, we need to break through the current contracts we have where people are actually sitting at and get those firmed up, they're not firm enough numbers at this point. So, you know, we're giving it the best we can at this point, but I still think there's gonna be some changes there. And so I don't want you to be surprised if you come back and see some changes from this point on with regard to some of the contract cycles that we have for those areas.
And Joan, that sort of has to do with longevity of people doing those.
Positions.
Yeah, they get a little bit more if they've been here a certain number of years. If it's somebody new, they get the lower rate, that kind of thing, so we have to work through that.
It's all based off of the contract.
It was a new contract last year, so it has new numbers and they all went up. So between that and this longevity, all that comes into play.
So we're working through.
So we have to see who says they're gonna do stuff again.
And so then that gets back to your question, Colby, you'd asked about where some of these other salaries exist for people. If we go on into two oh one, seven twenty, thirty-five hundred. Thirty-five hundred, one nineteen. It says other supervisors are getting salaries and he has eleven thousand. When you look at it, you will see what's broken out here is that part of Dan Gravous' contract is he has an additional thirty-five hundred that he's paid in attendance at games. You have state bonus payments for when, you know, teams achieve going to state. There are bonus payments under the contract that they are given. And then you have the athletic director's salary that is all built into that. So those are things that build up to that line items.
Include coaching and all the extra work on that?
No, that, the coaching, if we, if we jump down, let's just go to the next area, which is girls' basketball.
I'm sorry, gotta hit, okay.
Okay, then we try to break it out for, you know, like each sport, like under girls' basketball, you have the head coach and assistant coaches and other professional salaries and, you know, the travel and your supplies and stuff. And so you can see how these things break down.
Got it.
And the travel is what we put in to the, from the general fund. This is, we're budgeting from the general fund, these items here, that doesn't take into account what the kids have fundraised.
Yeah, the fundraised money is not included in this, it's just general fund dollars.
So this is to the extent that we're supporting our, you know, supporting the kids, so.
This gives you a basic rundown of the budget.
Where's the crossing guard show up here?
No, they're not volunteers, the crossing guard are part of the aides. So under our instructional aides, they, part of their job description is they will act for the crossing guards. So when they punch in on the time clock, we've accounted for fixed number of hours that they are gonna be there. We also have like under special education aides, we have a responsibility to have a bus monitor on special ed bus. So that aide has an extended contract, comes earlier, get on the bus, that runs the route and picks the kids up and then stays later and gets on the bus and makes sure the kids get home. And then they get dropped off back here at the school and they, you know, punch out at that time. Crossing guards. Hmm, not really. For some of them, we're paying a hundred and nine dollars an hour. So about nine dollars a day, it was crossing guards. And that's, that's just rough off the document at the time.
Probably safety money well spent. It's more about the traffic, I think it's more about the cars and then.
We get our kids, I mean, there's so many vehicles on both sides, it's a bad from dark now. And if there's someone clocking in across the, at the crosswalks, it helps a lot. The older ones seem to do great, my third grader.
Hmm, depends, one more parent to drop off over here, which is a good thing. And then, and then they go with the crossing. And I know you guys are encouraging them to drop off up here. That's why we're gonna do something along the avenue, because that's a fairly scary proposition. With the way the parking and the people stop in the middle of the street and people pull off by the fence and the car doors are opening and they're trying to control that a little bit. That's the first thing I was really amazed at, the first day I dropped my, at that point, second grader off. I'm like, what? People going in which direction? But then I was used to in Virginia, we, you had to line up and then one car at a time. And car at a time, one car at a time, and everybody was going the same way and nobody was going in opposite direction. But they were in a cul-de-sac, so they could manage that.
That's, that's in this budget. Yeah, so if you take a look at this budget sheet here, the LPI budget sheet, it talks about where the budget numbers come from. And so, and Jeanne, help me on this, just to make sure, I don't wanna get prolonged. If you talk about fiscal year two thousand fourteen budget limits, the highest voted amount is the amount that's already been approved and voted upon by the taxpayers.
That includes all those monies, that five hundred and thirty-two thousand that are bottom, those are over all the years of.
Okay, so. Under item ten, you'll have to excuse me, I don't work this, this much, I'm some more than this. Under item ten, prior year information for budgeting, we have the highest over base authorized between two thousand eight, nine, and twelve thirteen. And so, I'm sorry, adopted and unbudgeted, yeah, E, there's five hundred and thirty-two thousand.
And that, I've made that add to your base budget, which is in the nine B, that should be your five million, two ninety-eight, I believe, that works. What I'm from the budget.
So the hundred and thirty thousand is in effect.
Yes, it is, yes.
So that's gone.
If we compared that over the years, we went back to the old sheets. So before that was voted in, that number was actually more, this, this highest base overbidding was actually more because we were still paying on the building bond. But we've now paid off the building bond, so then that went down and then we put the hundred and thirty thousand was voted on. So we're still at less than we were a few years back because that building bond is paid off now.
So now competing needs in the district, for example, school resource officer, it's budgeted in, and we're placed within the budget. So that if the board wants to approve that, then it most certainly could. But what I would ask meeting members to do is, as you take this information home with you, take a look at it, find questions you have, come back and ask the questions at our next meeting. If you, if you've got a burning question that you wanna ask, you can call myself and Mrs. Morgan. We'd be happy to go through how this was constructed to give you as much information as possible. Because we've got, one of the things I'd like to see this committee be able to do is give a little bit of direction to the board in terms of, you know, as we move towards trying to fill positions. You know, we've looked at from the standpoint of expenditures on supply budgets and although the supply budgets have been cut back a little bit, we still feel very comfortable with how the expenditure actuals have turned out this year so far. And so we'll make sure that we have that information at our next meeting and see what we should do in terms of lighting.
On the, on the note, we'll take these home and review them. I kind of, I'm a guy to ask a lot of questions, so just kind of let that out. But is there any, rather than call, can I email you both in the form of, put them in a bulk? And then heck, I could be calling you ten times a day, it doesn't really make sense. And I email a lot of my questions, I understand you guys have your business and all this, but.
Well, one of the.
I'll bulk them and then it's simpler, I can check them at night and.
Yeah, one of the things I want you to, to feel comfortable with, Colby, is we work, you're an elected official. If you have questions, we're gonna answer your questions. We're gonna try and get through it as quick as we can, with the ordinary business day that we can, to get answers for your questions. We want you to know and understand and feel comfortable with some of the things you're gonna have to do as an trustee. So we want you to have the information necessary to make informed decisions.
I think the answer to his question is if you email them to Jeanne and she and John can collaborate on what, that's probably the most logical thing.
That's my question, and I can have, because in order for me to be prepared for the next meeting, it helps me if I have answers to those questions prior and then there.
I've still not, I've only been here a year, so I'm still kind of in the process as well. So I'm not like, I can just jump right on and.
Yeah, and I understand, and that's what I'll say, I'll limit them as much as I can and I'll make them as, as that. But I, you know, in order for me to go through and have, you know, I'm new, I'm gonna have a lot of questions. There's gonna be a lot of character, this is not, I'm, I'm big on budgets, I run my own company, I'm very familiar with budgets. I've done it for a long time, so I'm not new to a budget, but I, I'm new to.
School budgets, yeah, yeah.
You know, when I'm a guy with numbers, I'm used to seeing actuals and stuff, so I'm gonna be that guy, not trying to cause problems.
No, no, that's just communication, yeah, absolutely. So you know where I'm coming from, but I'm not supposed to share either, so.
Correct me if I'm not, you know, if I'm getting pushy or attracting you.
But that would be the logical thing, if you tell her what you want and she and John say, okay, here's what we should do.
And yeah, that, my point is I'm an email guy, I don't know if I.
I love email.
If I'm for five years, I don't even know how to use a fax.
I think email's great.
Okay, so we're good that way, okay.
But just, just so you're aware, the actual, the actual preliminary budget sheet was created out of Black Mountain. They generated some numbers, there were some numbers that weren't good. And what I mean is, I can tell just right off the top of my head, it didn't look right.
And was there transfer?
Yeah, and so, you know, I immediately walked into Mrs. Morgan's office and said, what's going on here, why is this?
And I believe part of it is because they're using one software, Black Mountain different software. When they did that transition a few years ago, I have to think that has to do with the coding and how that's applied in Black Mountain, but I've been communicating more with Black Mountain because I think that's where the shift is, how we were coding in Black Mountain. Because payroll setting is certain ways, when I run payroll, those accounts are already set up. So when I run somebody, you know, custodian for instance, it's already got a set, set of general ledger accounts. I don't go to change those. But possibly there was some changes in the timeframe from Foxi Lady to Black Mountain. Let's come up and investigate.
And so what it essentially spins into is, I ask the question, she investigates a little bit. She's gonna need to go back to talk to the people up at Black Mountain about how when they came in and they took over the budget and started entering stuff into their software, and we switched all, how did they go about coding these certain things. And the problem that we went into is if Mrs. Mason was still here, she could answer those questions probably off the top of her head because she was intimately involved with all of that.
Is Black Mountain, how long have we been trans, how long have we had Black Mountain?
I think it was ten or nine or ten.
So it's relatively new?
Yeah. It's great, it's a great software, it just, a few little items like this, which I happen to think has to do with the coatings. And that's why I see them different places.
Well, and the other thing is if the person doing the key just made one wrong number, that puts you in a different count.
It was mapped a lot of it, so it was automatic.
It's what I'm trying to say, it's map document, so when I run payroll, they say those codes are reset, they don't change anything. But if there was miscommunication between the Foxi Lady program and the Black Mountain as to how things were set up, as he said, the mapping, then that can.
I hope that you can get, I'm hoping to get all that, I'll be honest, I'm gonna have some, I'm gonna have a hard time making decisions without actuals.
And it's not that.
Well, you're gonna get some actuals, and we've got different ways to produce it, which, you know, we're going, you know, I'm talking to Mrs. Morgan about us getting that stuff for you. You know, it's, it's just gonna take us a little bit of time, because I don't want to give you that. I want to make sure you do that, remember, so that you can sit down and look at it and not waste your.
At our fiscal year, end, end June, end of June, that is for July one, we have to have the actual. Okay, so I mean, time's kind of a vessence really, I mean.
Yeah, we're gonna do it well before then for you, you'll get it well before then. Because the other thing is that we have our budget hearings. This preliminary budget stuff, we'll be working up with it up until middle, middle of July. And then what you have is a final budget hearing that comes out, first part of August. And that final budget hearing is the adoption of the budget, where the board actually does its formal procedures to say, here is the budget, we're going to adopt, it's going to run the fiscal year.
So this committee comes to the, comes to the board and says, here's what we, here's what we found, here's what we think we should do. Yeah, and so they make a recommendation to the whole board from this committee, so.
All right, thank you.
What category did we put the SRO in? I just wanna star that comment up here. We were building that one in so that we know. And the other thing, we've been able to say, yes, we want an SRO, whether we're Valley County or have somebody to, to send us to.
Under one thousand three fifty, very first page, contracted services.
Okay, all right, so.
Under your detailed budget.
All right, there we go. All right, there we go, that, that one makes sense.
How much that is, what's an SRO cost, what's your salary rule?
Well, what they do is they, the Rivali County Sheriff's Department bills us for that position. What it is, they say about a halftime position, but really the halftime position is more closer to thirty-five to forty thousand dollars. So they're gonna tell you that, you know, even though they call it that, it's really not that. We've had anywhere from twenty-two, twenty to twenty-two thousand quoted to us. We've had anywhere from twenty-two, twenty to twenty-two thousand quoted to us, we put a little bit of cushion in the event that they come back and negotiate a little bit more with us on what they think the actual cost is going to be to start the program up and perform it again. And that's not a for-sure thing, because I haven't had the board as a whole embrace the SRO program yet, you know, and say, this needs to happen, so we're still at a very preliminary stage with the Sheriff's Department on discussions involving this program.
Last time we had one was two thousand ten.
Correct.
We had twenty, twenty thousand for them.
Well, what ended up happening back then was, they, we ended up eliminating a position that had to deal with costs, the program was costing around twelve thousand dollars, and the Sheriff's Department said it could no longer sustain, allowing us to have an SRO program for that cost, they came back with, I believe it was nineteen thousand dollar cost for the program to sustain it as it had existed, and showed us some numbers in terms of why they needed to do that, you know, when they have a full-time officer working in their department, I believe their costs are closer to seventy thousand dollars for that, and they were saying they, they needed to increase it because of their budget issues that they had on their end. And then we had our own budget constraints and issues that we were dealing with back then, you know, pulling back on some programs at the school, and this program got tied up into that entire flux of, it was going to cost more, and we were already cutting back programs in other areas, so there was just a whole discussion as to the viability of that program for the school. But I think, you know, it was a program worth revisiting.
And we have talked at various meetings, several of us feel real strongly that it's important, do we just have to talk about it again?
Yes.
So, if so, all your feeling is that, the money available or proposed budget, regular matches, so there's no major, there's a concern like there was a few years ago, and the actual.
Correct. We're sitting, we're, this budget, we're sitting in a good spot with this budget, it isn't, this isn't a bad situation with the school district has, we can sustain programs for kids, we're actually able to possibly serve the needs. When we talk about our situation in the fourth grade this year, we have only two teachers in that grade level, those kids will be moving up to fifth grade next year, and we just have a dynamic in that class, grade level, that has created issues that we need to address, and a lot of parents have come in and have requested that, we consider making three positions for fifth grade this next year, even though there was only two positions in fourth grade this year. And it has to do with some of the issues that this group of kids brings with them into the school building. Every group of students, every grade level of students have different personalities, different ways that they approach life and approach education, and, you know, those parents have made a pretty strong plea for the school district to take a serious look at adding additional resources into that environment. Now, with that being said, they would ideally like to see an additional teacher hired on, but we could turn around and we could save money if we wanted to instead put some instructional aides in those environments, you know, hire a couple of instructional aides, put them in there. The exchange, though, that you start getting into when you make that type of a decision is, if you create smaller class sizes with a person who's a teacher, and you have three teachers that are working with smaller class sizes, you're probably going to see a better bang for the educational value for those kids, where they're getting some pretty intensive instruction and have better achievement, versus when you put two aides in there and save some dollars, what are the cost savings versus the gains that you could have seen if you had had three teachers, because two aides are going to cost you all over twenty thousand, and a new teacher, we're budgeting in at right around thirty-two to thirty-three thousand, so you had to ask yourself, okay, where is the value? How do you value this out?
As well as, which, which option actually addresses their current concerns? I mean, I'm really glad to hear you say that you look at each class, as, or the kids that they are, what they bring to your building, as opposed to, you know, we're going to make that decision strictly on P T R. I mean, I think that's responsible, what I do is to look at the impact a group of children can have in a building, and rest of that way.
And we've noticed that in the past, we've had groups of kids that go through that have very similar situations to this group, and we've seen how they have grown up in our system, and how they've had problems within our system, and if we can somehow provide them with some additional support earlier on, we might be able to avoid or head off some of the issues that they may have, so that is just one way.
Well, and I think the dynamics of this group has changed a good bit since we, at the end of their second grade year, said, boy, we think we can do it with two teachers, I think the dynamics has changed in this group, to the extent that we, we can't be there anymore.
Well, not only that, I know, it seems like every family that moved to intend the district had a fourth grade child, so.
So, we are pushing the numbers of, of successful allowable O P I at where we are now, with just two teachers, and so we need to, we need to step up.
Like, have you all, like, stabilized, or has it still gone down?
It's stabilized, it's, you know, we've got it all the time, we're there, you know, we're two thirty-seven, I mean, eight thirty-seven, eight fifteen, eight twenty-six, you know, I would, I would suspect we'll probably be around eight thirty, eight twenty to eight forty range at the beginning of this next school year. I'm not seeing, you know, we're not seeing a lot of kids leaving right now, and we're not seeing a lot of new kids come in. Kindergarten.
Can you know how to roll the book?
We're up a little bit from where we were at this point last year.
Are we going to be covered there, are we going to have enough with what we've got lined up?
I think so, yeah, because we'll continue with our two-year kindergarten combo.
Okay. Because that's often an indicator, it's kindergarten, we're going.
Yeah, we're sitting at forty-four kindergarten.
Is there anything pending with the appreciation of the teachers on the contracts, other than, would John mention the increases because of the latest degrees and stuff?
The teachers' contract has already been approved and ratified.
So that's all factored into this. Classified contract is not, and classified is an employee that does playgrounds, special ed, secretarial, custodial, those types of jobs within the school. Their contract is up for negotiations this year, so they could issue me a letter at any time, so if they want to open up negotiations, we're going to be able to handle that, so that they will deal with them with their face.
So, is it effective standard, or is that not going to be major effective?
Not, in fact, it's in some additional costs for them already, I wouldn't want them to know what that number is yet, because they don't know exactly what the starting point is, but, you know, I know that we're probably going to have to deal with it on some level, so it's factored in there. If, if we came back and we didn't negotiate a contract, and we pulled that money back out of the budget, slide it into the supply dollars, if that's what we choose to do.
But their two-year contract comes to an end this year, and so, they're either have to renew or roll, right?
Correct.
So, they're going to negotiate something new, or they're going to say, okay, we'll stay with what we have and roll, they can do that for a one-year period, right? If they choose to, so. And we've been lucky here in the last few years, that the units have been willing to come in, and we've been able to negotiate in good faith without having to hire a negotiator, which is why we've been able to leave out the negotiation fees, you know, for hiring somebody, we've been able to have had good conversation, and everybody's been able to come to the table and, and negotiate in good faith, and, so if we had to, if we had to hire a negotiator, what are we looking at, a minimum of four or five grand just to get him in the door?
Yeah.
So, it's, you know, appreciated that, we'd rather give them that, give them as much as we can without having to hire somebody for argument. How are you ladies feeling over here?
Yeah, I think, you know, having just had a chance to look at the legend, that it seems like it's, it's balanced, and that's a good thing.
Yeah, that's a good thing, and, and I don't know that the, all this legislative movement that happened this year was, it definitely wasn't a detriment to us, let's put it that way, it wasn't, if, whatever little tiny bit we got, it wasn't a lot of money, but at least we weren't stepping backwards, so that's a good thing. Anybody else? So, do we, do, John, do we want to go ahead and try to, to look at our calendars for another meeting here, since we've got everybody in room ones here?
Well, just so you guys are aware, we've got a special board meeting for Thursday, we have the regular school board meeting for the eleventh.
And the tenth is middle school graduation.
We're wrapping up applications here, review here, there'll probably be interviewing in here, so we're going to probably end up having to do some kind of special board meeting later this week, or early this week.
Maybe early this week.
The week of the seventeenth. So, we're probably looking right in here, so I would say, if we could shoot for like the twelfth, for a budget finance meeting.
I'm also going to revise my schedule, because I have the orders coming the third, the whole week.
Yeah.
And I double, triple payroll, we can run that quite morning, but I don't know if that's going to give me time to really delve into these questions that you have. I'll try, but, my, the second's escalating right now.
I know.
It's a very, very tight month of June, so I can delve into it, but I don't know if I'll have all the answers, to see, communicating with Black Mountain, comparing to Foxi Lady, and finding out the payroll questions that we're talking about.
I'm going to be gone for six weeks, June, but, so, the twenty-fourth.
Let's talk about this, just so the committees, at least have a little bit of discussion. In looking at the budget as it stands right now, I know that you've not had an opportunity to really study it, so this might be an imperative question, but, as we move forward with, you know, I, I'm going to have to interview and get a recommendation for hire out, I would say later than the fourteenth of the month, you know, that, that's pushing it out there. We could push that to the twenty-first, if, if we wanted to, but if, by doing so, what ends up happening in your application pool is, you have some good candidates who might take jobs elsewhere. And so, one of the big questions that stands out there right now is, okay, you can see where the cuts have been made in this budget, in order to build in the SRO position, in order to build in the additional teaching position that we're talking about, and that's basically writing those supply dollars for district-wide, middle school, elementary high school. Could we feel comfortable with moving forward on hiring an additional teacher at one of those grade levels? And leave those supply dollars as they stand, or, we need to hold off and, and hold the hiring process up a little bit, so that everybody's afforded an opportunity to better study this, so that it's a better decision and a recommendation to go before the board, because once we do the interviews, we're going to have to have a meeting with the board to actually take a motion to hire.
Well, my two cents on it is to move forward with hiring that position. If you look at the budget, we were able to add ten thousand to each of the supply budgets for this year, and I was really grateful, but having only had it for one year, and then having it cut, I, I can live with that, that means hiring an additional teacher.
I was going to say, I hate for us to miss out on the best of the applicant pool. We know we have to have some sort of help for these, for the fifth grade, and then do we have to have, we're going to have to recruit, to replace a retiring teacher.
Well, the retiring teacher has to be.
That has to be done anyway, so then the question is, we're, are we going to be recommending this to the board?
I mean, we could hold off on the second position until later in June, and fill the, the first position either way, you know, get that person interviewed and hired, and put before the board as soon as we possibly can. We're going to have to have a special more, board meeting later in June, down here for closing out the budget.
Well, we have our week, our work meeting too, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is a, you're talking about a one position, fifth grade position, so you're saying, do we have, how many do you have in mind to, that, how many applicants?
We have about seventy applicants right now.
And you got it narrowed down, is there somebody got your eye on you?
We haven't closed it yet, they're still coming in, we still have applications.
You feel we need to have that, have that position, there's seventy applicants?
Yeah.
And we're worried about getting the best of the seventy, is that what you're telling?
We try to hire the best we can, and what ends up happening is, when you screen out those seventy applicants, there's usually about five or six gems, ones that are really good, and when you start chasing that, that person, usually you'll find that a lot of the districts that are trying to fill their positions in the area have these people on the bottom, they're most awesome. And we've been in situations where we've hired somebody, and I've gotten a call from a fellow superintendent saying, oh, man, what'd you take that person for, we were really interested in them, right? But we've also been in the situation where we've been very interested in somebody, and we went to take them, and they already accepted our position elsewhere.
And you need to have this decision by what date, did you say?
Well, the, the soonest that I can see us doing this is about the fourteenth of June, you know, having a recommendation to work for hire, because, number one, we have to screen all those applications, and then we're going to have to set up interviews, and then after we do the interviews, you know, this point might be, Martin, if you're gone the first three weeks, you won't be here the week of the seventeenth, Jeannie wouldn't be here the week of the seventeenth. What about the twenty-fourth? Could we do a meeting on the twenty-fourth as a budget finance? We'll try to do a board meeting the twenty-sixth, because we're going to have to have our work board meeting the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, the twenty-seventh, anyway, for the board, then we could have a budget finance committee before that, and get a recommendation coming out of here for trustees for their work session.
What would the board meeting in twenty-six be, I just got to go, what meeting will happen?
Well, what it does, what, what that board meeting is, Colby, is that trustees come in and we usually try to close out our budget for the fiscal year, and we go through, and we take a look at the facilities, oh, we did walk, walk-around inspection, and then we finalize some of our end-of-the-year projects that we have, and we take a look at the, the needs of the facility, and needs of programs, and make decisions on how to spend out that end-of-the-year monies. One of the things that we're faced with this year is, every year since I've been here, we've been trying to put money in our reserves, and we've been very successful in sticking money in our reserves each year, well, this year, we're going to do a budget amendment, and we're going to be pulling, probably on Thursdays. Well, this year, we're gonna do a budget amendment, we're gonna be pulling, probably on Thursday, special board meeting, we're gonna be pulling easily six digits out of our reserves to cover the cost of a new system for the school district, because our grain field is not doing what it should do, and so.
That's a nice way for saying it's kaput.
Where, where do we, speaking of reserves, where's this, where do we know, where's our reserve? Is that in here, where, where do we know where that is?
That comes up in the final budget hearing.
That'll be, you'll tell me in the final budget.
Well, no, I'll tell you, I'll tell you, as soon as I'm able to get the information in the office, we can give that to you.
Call that the reserve fund?
Budget reserves. And on budget reserves, a school district's not allowed to have more than ten percent of its general fund. So in our general fund budget here, that's five points, what, five point three million approximately? You cannot exceed ten percent of that free reserve.
So our next, this was a preliminary budget overview, so you're saying we could have one on the twenty-fourth? What's, what's that one gonna be called, what do we?
Preliminary budget review.
Same thing, and then you're talking the, the two days later, if everything you go, you, you bring up, and we have a board meeting to pass the entire budget?
No, no, just to make a recommendation to the board.
Make a recommendation. Well, I mean, I'm fine with meeting on the twenty-fourth. I mean, I, I, as a new guy, I don't really feel great on making a decision on, like you're asking me to without, I got a lot of stuff to look at here, so no, I don't, I don't feel comfortable with that decision.
Well, that's why I said I think it is somewhat unfair question to ask, you know, that's why I coached it that way when we started this. So, 'cause I don't want, I don't wanna be rushing people into decision-making either.
Just make sure I understand what it comes down to, deciding.